So, welcome to the third inquiry into allegations of impropriety against agents of the city of Canterbury Bankstown Council. Before I commence, I would like to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Ura Nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today, we will be hearing from executive officers at the City of Canterbury Bankstown Council. Mr Matthew Stewart, the Chief Executive Officer, and Mr Ken Menosky, the Director of Corporate Services. Mr Stewart and Mr Menosky are accompanied by their legal advisers. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. The proceedings are also being recorded, and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry, terms of reference, and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. I note that in accordance with the resolution and with the prior agreement of the committee, the witnesses appearing today are accompanied by and will have reasonable access or opportunity to consult their legal advisers during the hearing. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are requested to be provided within forty-eight hours of the provision of the transcript. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and the witnesses to speak into the microphone. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome the witnesses for today's proceedings, Mr Stewart and Mr Menosky. First, could you please state your names and position titles and swear either an oath or affirmation?
My name's Matthew Stewart. I'm the CEO of Canterbury Bankstown Council, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
My name is Ken Menosky. I'm the council's Director of Corporate Services. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appear today in my capacity as the CEO of Canterbury Bankstown Council. I was first appointed to the position of General Manager in 2011, following council amalgamations in 2016. I was appointed by the government as the first General Manager of Canterbury Bankstown Council. In my brief opening statement, there were just five matters that I wished to address. First, contrary to suggestions that have been made, at no stage have we ever refused to appear before the committee. Rather, on numerous conditions, I requested particulars so that I could have an understanding of what particular issues or allegations the committee was inquiring into. At each point, we won't give an information other than on 16 December and 23rd of January, the committee advised it intended to ask questions relating to council entitlements, councillor disclosures, councillor expenses, and policies relating to councillors. That said, I would consider the invitation once I had a proper understanding of what particular concerns or issues were under investigation. With none forthcoming, I didn't get the chance to further consider the invitation. In any event, I have not refused to attend. I've always indicated my willingness to assist the committee, and that remains my position. Secondly, and as a related point, I've asked for particularity about any issues or allegations which the committee wishes to explore as a matter of procedural fairness. The terms of reference have been unhelpful and vague and broad and extend to any matters in regards to the city of Canterbury Bankstown and previous city of Bankstown. I haven't been provided with any information or particulars about the nature of any allegations or issues, or any issues that are subject of the inquiry or the agents against whom the allegations have been made. The committee is required to uphold the procedural fairness resolution, and I have concerns about whether, to date, that has happened. The concerns have been stated in detail in the letters which have been sent on behalf of the council to the committee, and I don't repeat them now, but the letters have been published at our request on the inquiry website. I respect the processes and work of the committee and respectfully ask in return that the requirements of courtesy, respect, and procedural fairness be afforded. My third point, the council has been asked to produce a wide-range document spanning some eighteen years. In the council attempting to cooperate with the request of the committee to provide documents over an eighteen-year period, it has had to expend significant resources and time to review, collate, all of the requested documents. The committee did refuse to provide any assistance with the costs. Nonetheless, council is continuing to comply with the request as best it can within its resources. Given these matters and noting that the committee has permitted that we are able to take questions on notice, we may need to do so to ensure that the answers are accurate. Fourth, where allegations relating to the council have arisen through proper processes or concerns have been brought to my attention that have the potential to bring council into disrepute or alleged wrongdoing, I have sought to have those matters investigated in accordance with council's code of conduct processes and procedures. Those procedures include undertaking preliminary inquiry to establish if there is merit in a full investigation. A number of those matters have been canvassed by this committee in earlier hearings and have been the subject of extensive reviews by bodies such as the Office of Local Government and Independent Commission Against Corruption. Fifth, the comments made under parliamentary privilege recently in relation to planning matters at Canterbury Bankstown and the former Bankstown Council is an example of where I commenced a preliminary investigation under the code of conduct by engaging CINC solutions from the adopted panel of conduct reviewers. This was done with the full endorsement of the council. Legal advisers were also engaged to oversee the investigation and provide a report on the issues which had been raised in Parliament. During the course of the investigation, attempts were made to contact the MP who made the allegations to clarify what they were and to obtain more information, but there was no response. Nevertheless, the investigation was carried out and a report from CINC was issued, and advice was also given by independent legal counsel. Those documents have been made available on council's website, and among other findings, it was concluded that there was no conduct identified as bringing in breach of the Code of Conduct or the Local Government Act which could be deemed corrupt conduct for the purposes of the ICAC Act or an offence under any other act. In relation to the allegations made in Parliament, there is no evidence of any corrupt or unlawful conduct or breaches of the Code of Conduct or Local Government Act, and it found the General Manager and senior staff proactively took steps to ensure councillors were meeting their obligations in respect of the Code of Conduct. I do commend those reports to the committee, and I do have copies available today if the committee would like to receive copies, if it doesn't have them already. And I understand that Mr Menosky, who is appearing in his capacity, namely council's Director Corporate, wishes to make his own brief opening statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been employed with Canterbury Bankstown Council and the former Bankstown City Council for almost thirty-one years, of which the past twelve years has been as the Director, responsible for the oversight of council's corporate functions, including finance, governance, property, policy development, procurement, internal, audit, legal, and executive service functions. I wish to make some remarks in my opening statement, and I will be brief. First, I share and echo the observations made by Mr Stewart. Secondly, contrary to suggestions that have been made during the committee's inquiries and in the media, I have always been prepared to assist the committee and have never refused and avoided the committee's request to appear before the inquiry. Respectfully, on numerous occasions, council has requested details and informations concerning the allegations and the questions of interest that the committee is pursuing. This has not been provided, and so, in attending today, I have no understanding of any particular questions or issues or allegations which the committee might wish to explore. Thirdly, the council has a well-established corporate governance framework which supports the operations of our organisation. The framework consists of more than ninety council and operational policies. Of these policies, twenty are attributed to council's corporate and governance functions, including council's policies relating to councillor expenses and facilities policy, code of conduct, fraud and corruption prevention policies, business ethics, and our code of meeting practice. Importantly, council's policies reflect applicable model codes, guidelines, and templates issued by the Minister and the Office of Local Government, particularly those issued by the department's Chief Executive under section twenty-three A of the Local Government Act and other relevant statutory bodies. Separately, all council policies are considered and set by the governing body, that being the council itself, and when appropriate, endorsed for implementation by the CEO and relevant staff. I will refer to some of these policies as appropriate today. I will try and explain them as best as I can, noting that they are quite detailed provisions in these policies, and I have no opportunity to prepare to assist the committee. Fourthly, the matters raised by the committee in its earlier hearings concerning the application of council's training funds have been separately investigated by the Office of Local Government, or also known as OLG. The OLG have subsequently indicated in writing that they are satisfied that no further action is warranted in relation to the context of council's policy in so far as it relates to the professional development of the mayor and councillors or the reimbursement of the mayor's expenses for particular subjects undertaken by the mayor. The council has previously responded to inquiries made by the OLG concerning the application of council's expenses and facilities policy and its Smart Cities Overseas Study Tour. Again, the council addressed these issues raised by OLG, and no further actions required. Finally, as noted by Mr Stewart, the council considers the allegations made by any MP in Parliament very seriously and proactively referred these for independent investigation and advice. The broad nature of the allegations and the manner in which they were raised has caused significant stress and anxiety for all of our council staff. Accordingly, it has been seen as important to have these allegations independently scrutinised by an experienced investigator and separately by legal counsel. The council did not have any involvement in the investigation. The report has been requested by the Minister and has since been provided to her. We have not had any feedback or inquiry from the Minister. I thank the committee for the opportunity to make this opening statement.
Thank you. So, we'll move to questions now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'll start. Mr Stewart, Mr Menosky, nice to see you here today. Thank you for your attendance under someone's here today as part of this inquiry. Now, of course, it's been characterised by you that you did not frustrate the committee at all in terms of your attendance today, but you did write on several occasions seeking further clarification, even when it was outlined to you that you could choose a date within this window, still responding back, asking what would be put before you today. I've been a member of Parliament now for eight years. I've never had a witness come back to us at all and ask what would be the questions that we were put to them. Why did you take this approach to this committee inquiry rather than fronting up from the very beginning and answering the questions of the committee?
Sorry, Mr Fallow, what is it exactly you were saying that we asked?
I'm asking why was it that you tried to frustrate this from the very beginning?
Sorry, reject that we were trying to frustrate the committee, but certainly under procedural fairness, we were trying to get an understanding of what issues or allegations were to be put, and with an understanding of those, we would be in the best position to be able to respond to the invitation.
Now, the committee had broad terms of reference, as you acknowledged in your opening statement. Those broad terms of reference were given to us by the Minister for Local Government with an inquiry undertaken by this committee to look into those terms of reference. That was available for you as much as it was for us. Why didn't you take the approach of just coming before the committee and answering any questions that we may have had for you?
In our correspondence to the committee, we also asked for a narrowing and some specifics about any allegations or concerns that may be raised over quite an extensive eighteen-year period. That was a subject of engagement with the committee, and the committee sought to summons rather than continue to engage, as is its right, and we're here today.
Well, we're left with no other choice effectively because the committee is, of course, on a short timeframe with an election coming up and the activities of this committee being dissolved. Were you trying to run down the clock by not attending earlier?
Absolutely not, Mr Fallow.
So, there was no suggestion from the mayor, perhaps, that you should not be cooperative with this committee or should not come any earlier?
None whatsoever.
My hand over my call.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Mr Stewart, Mayor Aspel was featured under the influence of alcohol on Chelmsford's Current Affair Programme. Are you familiar with that footage?
I am.
Who took that video?
That video was from my device.
Why did you do that?
I can't recall why I did that at the time.
Okay, and how did that footage then make its way to Chelmsford?
My devices were taken without my consent. My devices were provided to a Member of Parliament, and files were taken from my devices and shared without my consent. Despite several attempts at trying to recover my files and my devices, unfortunately, that was... They never were returned from any persons, including from the Member of Parliament.
Do you commonly record compromising videos of the mayor?
No.
Can I ask which Member of Parliament?
Member of Parliament was the Member for Bankstown, Tania Mahawick.
What was discussed in the video?
I can't recall.
Okay, when was the last time that you spoke to the mayor about that video?
At the time that it was appearing on A Current Affair.
Okay, the mayor said he can't recall who took that video of him. How could it be, in your view, that he could possibly have forgotten it was you there in that position in that room?
I don't feel that that's a matter for my opinion.
You don't believe that the mayor misled the committee?
I don't believe he did.
Okay. Even though he surely knew it was you who was taking that video, or was he so inebriated at the time that he could have no recollection of what actually occurred on that night?
I can't speak for what state he was in.
Well, you say that the mayor... Obviously, you outlined that you had a discussion with him after that appeared on ACA. I imagine that discussion at that time was you outlining to him that it was you who had taken that video and the reasons as to how it came to be leaked to A Current Affair. Surely, the mayor would have known that it was you who took that video.
I can't speak for his recollection, and I can't recall the exact conversation at the time other than the fact that it was quite a heightened and stressful time.
I'm sure he wasn't happy.
It was quite a heightened and stressful time for myself.
And I'm sure that he would have had knowledge that it was you who took it, and when he was appearing before the committee, it was not truthful with the committee.
Madam Chair, this question's now been asked about three different ways, and Mr Stewart's indicated that he doesn't... That he has no more to add in relation to this, and that the mayor has previously indicated he doesn't recall that. I don't know why I keep asking the same question. He's going to elicit a different answer.
Madam Chair, I'll continue. Mr Stewart, do you recall which trip in particular that footage was taken on?
I don't, no, I don't.
You don't? You don't recall the nature of the trip? Why the mayor and yourself were making that trip?
No, I don't recall, I don't recall the date.
Nor the country?
I beg your pardon?
Nor the country? You said you don't recall the date. I asked if you don't recall the country that was taken in there?
Australia.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr Menosky, we've heard Mr Stewart, of course, accompanying the mayor on some trips. Have you accompanied the mayor or any other councillors on any interstate or overseas trips?
Yeah, there's been certain conferences that have been held throughout New South Wales.
Local Government conferences and the like?
Yeah, the like, particularly, so that is conducted by LGMA or LG New South Wales. Yeah, I did attend a conference in Melbourne, which was the LGMA Conference, I think it was, at the time. That's the only one I can recall in the state.
Anything overseas?
Sorry?
Anything overseas?
Yeah, in my thirty-one years, I did attend one overseas trip. That was to Japan. And that was a study tour, if you like, where we were assessing whether councils should pursue a waste facility at its Kelso Waste Site. My capacity of attending was in terms of financial management obligations. The study tour was trying to assess whether councils should invest tens of millions in dollars, tens of millions of dollars in a waste facility and then the operations of that waste facility at the time. And, look, I do recollect spending some time with relevant people in Japan to understand some of those financial implications that we would need to consider if we were to pursue that facility.
Thanks, Mr Menosky. And, Mr Menosky, were any of these for holiday or leisure at all?
Sorry?
Were any of these trips for holiday or leisure, or had a holiday and leisure component to them?
Not, no.
No?
No.
And...
Did you ever attend a place called Relaxia while you're in Japan? Does that ring a bell? That doesn't ring a bell.
Thank you. And, Mr Menosky, do you have dinner at all or meals with the mayor and other councillors at all?
So, we do have dinner with councillors at council meetings. That's part of our process before council meetings, part of our facilities policy.
But nothing outside of that remit affected?
Oh, look, there may have been some situations where, at the end of Christmas or Easter, we might have got together, but certainly not...
Not as a current standing arrangement or that, that people weekly, no? That's fine. And do you ever go to the mayor's house at all?
No.
No? And do you have the mayor over to your house or any other councillors? No, thank you. Mr Stewart, I might ask you similar questions. Could you please outline all of the trips that you've been on with the mayor and other councillors?
I've been on council for eighteen years, so I don't have a crystal recall of every single trip. In terms of overseas trips, I've been to Japan and Turkey and the US that I can recall. And I would need to be checking my records in terms of domestic trips, of which there would be numerous.
Sure, happy for you to take that on notice. Were any of these trips for holiday or leisure?
None of the trips were the purpose of holiday or leisure.
Okay, did they have a holiday or leisure component to them at all?
Sorry, I couldn't...
Did they have a holiday or leisure component to them at all?
The Turkey trip did have a private component of travel attached with it.
Okay. And how often would you have dinner with the mayor or councillors, Mr Stewart?
As a matter of practice, that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Over eighteen years at conferences or events, there may have been occasions, but...
And do you go to the mayor's house at all?
No, the only time I've been at the mayor's house is on numerous occasions if I'm to pick him up for a meeting where I'm driving past to collect him to drive into town or wherever it may be.
Okay, and do you have the mayor over to your house at all?
The mayor's never been to my house.
Okay. And how would you describe your relationship with the mayor? Would you call it a friendship or...?
I wouldn't consider it a friendship. I've had a working relationship with the current mayor since 2004, when he was elected, and since 2011, when I was first appointed as a General Manager. He's one of the three mayors that I've had during that time that I've had to work closely with.
Okay. And the mayor described your relationship as a professional relationship. Would you concur with that as being...
I would, I would.
And have you ever been on any overseas holidays with the mayor or any holidays with him or his family?
No, I haven't been on any overseas holidays. I've been on council trips and one self-funded trip to Chicago, which was reported to council where I was advancing the interests of the city.
And that was self-funded on your behalf as well as on the mayor's behalf, is that right?
Yes, yes, and that was reported to council publicly.
Okay, thank you.
When the mayor resigned from Labour's upper house ticket for the upcoming state election, it was, in my opinion, inappropriately put on Canterbury Bankstown Council letterhead. Why were council facilities and staff used to assist the mayor in managing his candidacy for Labour's upper house ticket?
At the time that that occurred, I was on leave, so I wasn't at work or dealing with those issues.
Okay. Mr Menosky, does that department fall within your responsibility?
No.
Okay. Mr Stewart, do you know whose idea it was to compile that release on council letterhead?
No, I don't. My understanding was that an inquiry came into the media unit.
Okay.
And the response was sent from the media unit, but I haven't seen it and I wasn't involved with it.
And, Mr Stewart, while you were on holidays, who was the acting CEO of the council?
Director of City Futures, Mr James Carey, I think at that time. There was two different people acting at different times.
Okay, thank you.
Are you aware of who wrote that media release?
No, I'm not.
Are you aware of anyone that might have joined in to assist manage the issue?
No.
Do you know if anyone on council objected to the mayor putting that announcement on council letterhead?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Do you know if any of the members of the executive team were actually consulted on that decision?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Do you believe that it was right for ratepayers to have paid staff to assist the mayor in managing his state candidacy?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the release, I haven't seen the inquiry, so I haven't inquired into that issue. My only understanding is that the request from the media came into the media unit for a council response, and one was provided out from the media unit, but that's all I know.
Okay. In a question put on, taken on notice, the mayor then referenced the person who managed the process of releasing that announcement on council letterhead. As a... And I apologise for any... For not getting this name right, but John Chafetti?
Chafetti, I thought.
Chafetti? Does that ring a bell? Do you know...
He's an employee.
Okay, and what's his responsibility?
His council's, his position is Senior Policy and Media Advisor.
Do you recall when he was hired?
I don't.
Was it soon, was it five years ago, was it, you know, quite a while ago?
It was a number of years ago, but I can't recall exactly when that was. He doesn't report to me, so I don't recall exactly when that was.
Okay. Do you recall if his role was publicly advertised at that time?
Yes, it was.
It was? Okay. Do you recall if anyone else applied for and was interviewed for that role?
Yes, a number of applicants, a number of people were interviewed.
Okay, and what exactly is the nature of his contract there? Is it full-time?
It's a full-time standard employee arrangement.
Yep, so directly employed by the council, not as a consultant?
Correct.
Do you recall if the mayor advocated for John to be hired?
No.
Did he used to work as a media advisor to a Labour premier?
I have no idea.
You have a call? Okay. Are you aware of any other senior staff of the sort, being former Labour staffers?
No.
Okay.
And, Mr Stewart, a council statement on Friday said that Mr Aspel had been the victim of a vicious, and I quote this, "a vicious smear campaign", and that Aspel's charging of ratepayers for items such as closing was within council guidelines. And then it quotes, "The mayor is vehemently denying any wrongdoing and has at all times adhered to the policy set by council, a policy scrutinised by the Office of Local Government", the statement said. "And the attack on the mayor has been a political hatchet job, and those pursuing him must be condemned." Do you know who wrote this media release?
No, I don't.
Okay. You didn't have any involvement in its expression?
I didn't.
No? And do we know if anyone else assisted or that you've made no inquiries?
No doubt, Mr Fallow.
And are you aware of which members of the executive team were consulted before this went out? I imagine that there's an approval process before media statements go out from council and that it has to be approved by some chain of command before something's issued under council letterhead?
I don't know.
No, well, what is the usual process in terms of a council media release being issued?
The media unit received... The media unit received media requests and then they try to seek the information from the organisation or individuals and they put together the media response and then send it out to the media outlets.
There's no approval process for you or any other executive?
No, there's not.
So things just go out from council just by the media unit with no tick off whatsoever?
Well, I have a media manager that's responsible for dealing with those issues.
Okay.
There's no sign, there's no sign off on myself or other senior staff, no.
Okay. Um, and um, when it comes to this kind of statement, do you believe that that's an appropriate statement for a council to be making with respect to the mayor's candidacy?
I haven't seen the statement.
You must be familiar with the statement, Mr. Stewart.
I haven't read the statement, I haven't read that statement.
So, Mr. Stewart, have you been living under a rock effectively? This is a major issue which has been impacting upon your council, there's been inquiry and you have not read that statement.
Apart from being on leave, I've been quite consumed with responding and assisting with the inquiry and I haven't.
And this statement has not come before you at all, you haven't made any inquiries whatsoever?
Correct.
It's quite extraordinary, Mr. Stewart, for you to come before this committee and outline that, that this is a statement that you're completely unfamiliar with and have made no inquiries about whatsoever and just happened to come into the ether, no idea who prepared it, no idea how it got out there with Canterbury Bankstown letterhead on it and something you've not been at all interested in. Okay. Um, and Mr. Stewart, if, if there's found to be any impropriety from the mayor by any investigative body, how does that reflect on you as the C E O of Canterbury Bankstown council? And would you maintain your position if there was to be found anything to be improper with the mayor's activities?
I think that uh, the question does call for an element of speculation and I would like to be, would, would like to have the benefit of actual facts to um, to be considering a question like that.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, Mrs. Stewart, uh, do I recall correctly that in your opening statement, you touched on your length of tenure at the council and that its predecessor?
Yes.
Do you mind just repeating?
Um, uh, I think two thousand and two I commenced at the council. Two thousand and two I commenced with the council. Um, and I've been there continuously except for a stint where I've worked at another council around two thousand and eight.
For how long?
Uh, approximately twelve months.
And then went somewhere else or then came back into the position you were in or?
Uh, so I can't remember exactly what position I was in when I left.
Okay.
Went to a manager role at Penrith.
Okay.
Came back into a manager role at Bankstown.
Okay, what were the circumstances behind you leaving at that point in time?
Career opportunity.
To then, with a view to coming back?
With a view to advancing my career.
Did you have any incidents with any colleagues at Bankstown council?
I've laid some specifics about what you're talking about.
Did you have any personal issues with any other of your colleagues at that point in time, which led to you leaving the council?
No, I, I left council because an opportunity came up for a leadership position and I applied for the job and was successful.
There was no issue with another colleague that left?
How is this questioning within the terms of reference relation to what's before the council, before this committee?
I'm going to the nature of Mrs. Stewart's employment. And the issues within the council.
Is there specific allegations that you put into, Mr. Stewart?
I'm giving, I'm giving Mrs. Stewart the opportunity.
Are you just simply asking um, questions that are outside the terms of reference of what we're supposed to be looking at?
No, and I'm giving Mr. Stewart the opportunity to speak to them.
I can't recall myself having any specific issues with any other individual, but I certainly applied for a, a job elsewhere to, to advance my career interests.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
Um, thank you. Um, I might turn to the independent report as um, you've outlined into Canterbury Bankstown council. Now, this was a report um, that was conducted by Sync Solutions, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, now the committee um, understands that no conflicts of interest were declared by Cathroch when conducting the investigation into those claims. And we've provided no evidence that Leah Chinui did not also work on the investigation. They are both people who have worked on Canterbury Bankstown council matters before, is that correct?
No, not entirely correct.
Okay, well, what work does, so neither of these people have worked on Canterbury Bankstown council? Work previously?
When, when Sync Solutions put its proposal forward, it was very clear in what personnel would be attached to the particular piece of work. And Sync Solutions only nominated Cathroch as the only person that would be working on. No, no, no other, no other person would be involved.
Okay, and has she previously done work involving Canterbury Bankstown council?
Uh, Sync Solutions is on the panel of conduct reviewers, which councils must have adopted and must draw from. And uh, Sync Solutions has done code of conduct work for the council along with a number of other conduct reviewers.
Do you have any other one, any other organisations that you use for that work?
Uh, Sentient, Train Reaction, uh, two that come to mind.
Okay. Um, and so as part of that panel, what sort of auditing work does Sync Solutions do for Canterbury Bankstown council?
Um, a range of investigations, preliminary conduct reviews under the Act, uh, and also investigations pursuant to preliminary conduct reviews.
And what's the total value of the work that Sync Solutions does for council?
That I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Okay, if you can take that on notice, that would be helpful. And um, have they provided any work assisting council with I C A C investigations?
They have worked on Operation Dasha. I can't recall whether they, I don't think they were engaged by council, I think they were engaged by council.
Okay, and do they assist council with onboarding work, onboarding staff or onboarding councillors?
Inductions.
Yep. And if I can just turn to um, Mr. Menosky in terms of um, that onboarding work, how does the councillor onboarding process work?
Uh, yeah, so um, at the, at um, as uh, every council is elected, so at the following election, um, there is a requirement through um, uh, the O L G that we carry out a comprehensive induction programme for all of our councillors. And the, the purpose of, of the induction is certainly to provide them some information and clarity around their roles, the expectations of their role, um, particular policies that specifically apply to them, uh, interpreting those issues and provide them an overview of all of those legislative issues that were required under the Act. Uh, the induction programme is also to convey all of the major operational issues that we, or they're responsible for, so for instance, um, the preparation of our budgeting process, preparation of operational plans, strategy, their role in developing strategy and so forth. So we try and canvass all those major issues. The officer local government's guideline provides a checklist of stuff that we must follow and provide and go through, uh, and we do that as a matter of course.
So let's take the last local government election, for instance, that was December nine. Following that, there is of course, you know, some candidates are elected, are declared elected pretty much on the night because of their result, others sort of slowly filter in after preferences and that are concluded. Um, then you have a council meeting where councillors are sworn in, is that correct? And then is the onboarding undertaken after that or before that or?
Yeah, so if, if we go back to, for instance, the last election, I think the election was in December, given the issues of Covid. Um, we have a requirement under the Act to swear in the councillors quite quickly.
Yep.
So that was, there was a process done there to, to do that. Um, and we're required within a very short period of time to also elect the mayor. So that process happened very quickly, shortly after everyone was um, um, the, the fifteen councillors were declared. Um, and then, um, I don't know the exact date, but shortly in the new year, um, then we carried out a fairly comprehensive induction programme. So every councillor must attend, so it's not just us.
So every councillor attends, do they attend individually or is it done as a group or?
Yeah, so there's, there's two ways that we do it. So one is there are particular sessions that are all councillors uh, attend. Uh, we do that either on a evening or on a weekend, I think it was on a weekend, um, this time round. Um, so we go through all that checklist that O L G provide us. Um, so that's all for returning councillors and all new councillors. Um, we also encourage councillors who want some further information around some of that induction to certainly engage with us again, to get some more information and some clarity if they want.
Okay, and which council staff are on that onboarding process?
That's generally run by a mixture of our executive services area, our governance area, our city futures area. So because of the wide-ranging things that we're required to provide, um, there are a series of people that are involved in that process. And we also prepare a quite a comprehensive induction manual that provides all the information to councillors. They have access to it both electronically and in hard copy. Uh, it's an important document for them to be able to draw upon, to understand anything that may relate to their roles.
And Mr. Menosky, where does Sync Solutions come in as part of this onboarding process, what's their role?
Yeah, so um, um, what we do is, in, in most, if I recall, over the many years I've been there, we generally um, manage the process in a, in a couple of ways. Um, um, we will obtain some quotes um, as to who may provide the induction services. So particularly around some of the more technical issues that the councillors need to be fully across. So in, in this round of um, uh, induction, uh, I do, I do believe Sync Solutions did provide a component of the induction for our, um, for our councillors. And as I said, uh, the remaining part of the induction is carried out by staff uh, to provide them an overview of, for instance, things like our operational plan, the various policies and so forth.
And a sort of um, council, councillors' professional development included as part of this onboarding process at all?
Yeah, so um, it's, professional development's probably an important introduction um, uh, made by the officer local government and the minister many years ago. So uh, I, I think it was around in two thousand and sixteen. Um, the minister and I, and O L G commenced consul, consulting with our sector or councils in general around providing a detailed handbook or guideline, if you like, um, of what councillors' roles were, expectations as part of those roles, um, the kind of capability framework that they needed to acquire the relevant skills and experience in fulfilling their duties. Um, uh, I, I understand, or I recall, there were some changes to our local government general regulation as well to strengthen that requirement. Um, we, in accordance with O L G's instructions and guidelines, um, we adopted a policy, um, that we needed to, uh, outlining what the professional development requirements were and that was endorsed by council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Menosky. So turning back to um, twenty seventeen, so um, the committee's recently received um, the advice that was provided to Mr. Aspel, um, regarding his M B A and regarding his ability to have that paid for by the ratepayers. Um, now, Mr. Stewart, that memo was signed by yourself, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. Um, and the memo referred to a one-on-one onboarding with councillor Aspel and councillor Elahayek as well. So is that unusual from the usual process, that there's a one-on-one onboarding process?
No, no, separate to the formal onboarding process, I meet with all councillors, together with a range of staff.
So that's a separate onboarding process, is it or?
What it is, is handing out equipment. So what we do is we meet with them all as soon as we can after declaration of polls and we issue phones, printers, laptops and equipment. And we do that with all councillors, either as individuals or groups, however they want to come. The indivi, the invitation's put out there and then they, they come in and sit down and we hand all that over and they take it away, sign for it and so on.
And is that done before or after the, you said the declaration of polls, but is that done before or after the swearing in of councillors?
Uh, I can't remember exactly when it was done, but there's no requirement for it to be done before or after, but after declaration of polls.
So after declaration of polls, not necessarily before or after the swearing in?
It's my record.
So I think in this instance, it was undertaken on, um, or at least the memo um, was of the September nineteenth while um, the councils were sworn in on the twenty-sixth of September. Would that be a usual occurrence?
I, I can't recall.
Okay. Would you be able to provide on notice a digital copy of the memo, um, as well as?
I'll take that on notice.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, and now just turning back to uh, Mr. Stewart, the um, uh, the Sync Solutions investigation to council. So it's my understanding, just one month before, um, you assigned Cathy Roach, as you outlined, who was the sole person who was to manage that investigation, that um, she also had undertaken a review into your performance as the general manager, is that correct?
She had facilitated the general managers' performance review committee.
Okay, and that was a committee process, was it? Who else sat on the committee?
Uh, a number of councillors.
Okay, the councillors sat on that committee. Uh, I would have taken it that the mayor would have been one of those councillors, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and then how many councillors would have been on there as part of that committee?
I'd have to check my records.
Okay, you're happy to take that on notice. So that review found that you were highly effective or exceptional in all fourteen strategic outcomes, is that correct?
I can't actually recall.
Okay. Take my word for it, I think it did, so congratulations on that front from that review. And the review found that your contract should be extended for a further five years, is that correct?
Um, I believe that was a matter that was put to the council.
Okay, and the, and the sum, and the value of your contract for that further five years uh, was over two and a half million dollars, is that correct?
Oh, I, I only know my annual T I P.
Okay, so I take it on that basis, five years, over five hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. And the review found that your contract should be broadened to include study tours and professional development, is that correct?
Um, there was a requirement that my professional development be articulated on an annual basis.
Articulated on an annual basis, what does that mean?
So each, each year, the council is required to develop a, a performance plan for each year and they were matters that should be considered on an annual basis as part of any professional development relevant to what's happening at the time.
Okay, and would that additional sum be paid for by council?
I believe so, but I haven't done any.
And is there a budget for your professional development on a yearly basis?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any budget for my professional development, to be honest with you.
So what would be the process for you undertaking any professional development to have that reimbursed?
Um, well firstly, the professional development would be articulated in a, a performance plan. Um, and then once that's agreed to by council, it would um, be booked by executive services staff and then um, it would only be able to be undertaken if there was appropriate budget in place.
Okay, and that would be in addition to your?
It would be.
Five hundred thousand dollars per annum?
It would be.
Yep. And this, um, and you don't feel that there's any need for you to pay for your own professional development? That it should be paid for by council?
I do undertake my own professional development, but where council feels that I should be doing a, a professional development in accordance with my contract, um, then that should be appropriately dealt with.
And have you expensed professional development to council previously?
I can't recall any.
Okay, would you be happy to take that on notice?
I could.
Um, and what study tours have you expensed to council?
Uh, none.
None?
That I'm aware of, none.
And no international tours or the like?
Um, no.
So you outlined before that you did a self-funded tour um, to Chicago for the smart, was that smart cities or was that a different one?
Um, it wasn't smart cities, but it was related to um, uh, business incubators by South Western University.
Okay. Um, and you paid for yourself for that trip?
Yes.
Um, did you pay for the mayor as well?
No.
No. And what professional development have you expensed to council, you're going to take that on notice? And the review that was undertaken by Ms. Roach found that on your request, your title should be changed from the general manager to the C E O to reflect the progressive nature of Canterbury Bankstown council, is that correct?
My understanding is that Ms. Roach facilitated the councillors undertaking the review, so it was a council process. But the request for this title change was my request.
Yep, and that was approved by that panel at least.
The full council.
So you have seen from Solutions, it's consistently found that Canterbury Bankstown council and its executive to be performing exceptionally, um, that's received, you will take it on notice, but I would estimate at least hundreds of thousands of dollars in contracts from the council. Um, and you believe that this organisation is suitable to be able to conduct an independent investigation into Canterbury Bankstown council?
I certainly have no questions with Sync. I certainly have no questions with Sync Solutions integrity, no.
You don't believe there's any conflicts of interest there whatsoever?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Don't you think that if they hadn't have cleared Canterbury-Bankstown Council of these allegations, that that would have had a deleterious impact on Sync Solutions and their role in their previous work for Canterbury-Bankstown Council?
I don't believe so. I believe that's a reflection on, a comment that's a reflection on myself and Mr. Menosky, but I don't believe that to be the case at all.
So no conflict of interest? And in terms of the allegations that were put before Sync Solutions to investigate into Canterbury-Bankstown Council, who chose which allegations would actually be investigated, because there are only a select number that were?
At the time, when we went through the handset comments, we weren't able to identify any particular allegation that was raised, rather insinuations. As part of the process, especially to ensure that all council officers, including myself, was kept at arm's length, we did engage council, who set out the parameters of what the investigation should be looking at, not myself, with one of those to be that Sync Solutions should try as best they could to distill what the allegations were or were aimed to be, and that those would be reviewed by council.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Stewart, just sticking with Sync Solutions for a moment. Within weeks of Sync Solutions beginning their inquiry, Cathy Roach was given tens of thousands of documents. We're now here months later trying to gain access to basic information. Why is there such a discrepancy between the availability of documents to Sync Solutions versus the New South Wales Parliament's upper house inquiry?
Specific to Sync Solutions, a large number of documents, the bulk of the documents relied upon, Sync Solutions were able to publicly source themselves from council's website, being public reports. The remainder of the documents were confidential council reports, which were sitting in a in our document management system for council meetings that were not archived and mixed into other boxes. And in addition to that, at the time the comments were made, I provided assistance to ICAC in relation to their own inquiries, where they sought particular information that was readily available as a result of that inquiry early on.
Did Sync Solutions request any of your personal expenses and did you provide them?
I don't recall that they did.
Okay. And why is it that we have not been able to ascertain your personal expenses when asked?
I understand that we've had ongoing correspondence with the committee in relation to responding to the request for documents over quite a broad range of issues over a very large time period, where council has been and continues to engage with the committee in correspondence, but also apply itself within its resources to the production of information. A number of productions have been made and will continue to do so.
I believe that was through part of a GIPA process. Nonetheless, look, my colleague earlier asked.
And while it's part of a GIPA process, this committee still hasn't received them, I don't believe.
Is that, there we go. I believe my colleague asked a few questions just a few moments ago and your answer was basically, you couldn't recall on numerous occasions there. I've got a few examples, I'll jog your memory. On New Year's Eve 2018, you spent approximately $439 at Roof Rack Superstore. Do you recall what you bought?
I don't recall that transaction.
Do you think it might have been for personal use or was it for use in your role as general manager of the council?
I'd need to refer to the records to be of assistance.
Okay, well I'll help jog your memory. Over the next fortnight, you had payments in Coffs Harbour. What were you doing in Coffs Harbour the first two weeks of January 2019? Were you on holidays? Do you recall a holiday in Coffs Harbour?
I don't recall.
Okay. The 3rd of June 2021, you spent $556.30 at Felix Bar and Bistro. Do you recall what was purchased?
No.
Do you recall who was with you?
I can't recall.
Were you there alone?
I can't recall being there.
Are you allowed to purchase alcohol in your role as CEO or general manager at the time?
In relation to the expenses for the council, there's no prohibition of alcohol.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a vehicle provided as part of your package?
I do.
You do? Which vehicle is that at the moment?
I have two vehicles as part of my package.
Okay, two. Would you mind outlining each of those two?
I have a Tesla and a van.
Okay. Does the Tesla have a charging station?
Yes.
At council?
And at home.
And at home. Did you install that charging system through your own personal account? Or did council arrange for that to be done?
I installed the charging system at home myself.
Okay. And did you cover the cost or has council picked up the tab for that?
I covered the installation of that.
Okay, thank you.
And the charger fee?
I beg your pardon?
And the fee for the charger as well, or?
Charger came with the car.
Thank you.
Any further?
That's it.
Okay. Now, just interested in what discretion does the general manager have toward tenders without putting it to council for a vote?
In terms of tenders, there's quite a comprehensive and long process and policy and process around how tenders are managed. I have a small role to play within the delegations that I have set by the council, depending on the value of the tender.
And do you have any discretion when it comes to awarding tenders without putting it to council for a vote? Is there a discretionary threshold or something that you're able to award tenders without it going before council?
Yes.
Yes, and what's that threshold?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall. I think it's...
Mr. Menosky, can you provide an insight?
What was the question, sorry?
About is there a threshold in terms of tenders?
Yes, yes, there is. So under the section 55 of the Local Government Act and the, I believe, 377, so without referring to the act, but there is the capacity for the council itself to delegate to the general manager asset limit to accept tenders. At the moment, that threshold is $10 million.
$10 million before, and that's before it goes out for tenders?
No, 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 sorry. I might explain it if you like.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So under the Local Government Act, section 55, there is a requirement that anything in excess of $250,000 must be carried out as a part of a tender process. So essentially, the process that we follow, so we have a centralised procurement function. So what that means is essentially we have staff dedicated to coordinating and managing, if you like, tender processes. So what will happen in general is, subject to funding being made available through our operational plan and our budget for a project, that's the first check. And then the responsible areas who manage either capital works or services or functions, where that service is in excess of $250,000 or estimated over $250,000, they will approach our procurement area and seek to establish a tender file, I'll call it. So that's opening up a specific file for a particular tender. The role of the procurement area is then to formulate a tender document. So we have standard templates which are provided to us and developed with our legal providers as to what we need to be reflecting in those tender documents. They manage that process of preparing the tender, they develop the scope, staff that are involved. An evaluation plan is developed and certain staff who are to oversee the project or determining who the project is, they form part of the evaluation team to prepare the scope for those documents. What they also do is sign confidentiality agreements as part of the process. Then in accordance with the Local Government General Regulation, there are three ways that we can go out to tender. So that's an open tender, an ELY process that we do. So what essentially happens is the panel itself will determine what the most appropriate method of tendering will be. They will carry out that process, they will evaluate the submissions. Once they've finalised their submission or their recommendations, that then flows through a series of gates, if you like, which is to be signed off by the relevant finance manager, governance manager, the relevant director that is responsible for that project. And then it'll flow on to the general manager at that point for his consideration. And those are for any, for all tenders, if you like, up to the value of $10 million. Anything beyond $10 million must go to council for consideration.
Okay. And what's council's internal audit process or verification process to assess tenderers and their bona fides, so to speak?
So we will assess the, if you like, the risks associated with any tenders. In a number of tenders, we will, as part of the evaluation plan, determine to engage probity officers and some of those might be external, or in some cases we may draw upon the internal auditor being involved in that process. Particularly where we want to assess the financial risk or any other strategic risks that are associated with it, particularly as the value increases and the nature of the tender or the project, then we will readily engage, if they're quite straightforward and vanilla type tenders, well then they're easy to manage. But yeah, in the more larger ones, we will certainly seek some probity advice and guidance around some of those.
Okay. And when it comes to this process, have councillors ever selected a tenderer that was not council staff's recommended tenderer? Do you have any recollection of that?
No, I can't say that there's been any situation that the council has not taken the recommendation of the evaluation panel that was set for this project.
So you've outlined the background checks that are undertaken. Do you make inquiries as to who the beneficial owners are of a tenderer as well? And for any companies that submit a tender, or do you do that at any stage of the process?
Look, I'm not entirely familiar with that particular point, but my recollection is that we do carry out financial health checks on any particular companies. Where we're not familiar, we rely, I mean obviously when making submission, each tenderer makes declarations that that's who they are and that's who they're acting for or whatever it might be. So we rely on that process. There are from time to time, I believe, that we may need to seek clarification. But that all information is provided by the tenderers and we rely on that.
Madam Chair, at this stage, I propose that we go into an in-camera session. I have one particular tender that I'd like to ask about and I think it might be best dealt with in camera, if possible?
Can I just say, in terms of other, is this the end of your questioning? Otherwise we should just do it at the end.
We've got a little bit more, but not a huge.
Could we do the other stuff first rather than?
Okay, we'll return back to that question if you can keep that process under my hand, over to Mr. Martin.
Can we just have like a five minute break, just for comfort?
Okay. Well, do we want to deal with this now then and go into a five minute break perhaps? Penny, are you happy with that? It's not going to take very long.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult.
So why don't we deal with this and then go into the five minute break and then let's say we resume publicly at 11:25?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to hash back over the issue of the media release in regards to the mayor's Labour candidacy. Will you commit to conducting an investigation into how council resources and staff time were used for that candidacy? The management of and the communication of that candidacy?
I don't think, without the benefit of the detail, I could commit to that, but it's certainly a matter that I can look at and make a determination as to whether there's an investigation warranted.
Are you aware of any other instances of council resources and staff time in particular being used for Labour Party political business?
No.
Okay. And I'll just give one final chance before I move on. Do you think it's appropriate for council resources to be used for somebody to launch their state political career in this way?
It's not a matter of my personal opinion. The policies and procedures and the Local Government Act sets forward clear outlines around those matters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanting to turn now to the issues around the LEP or some issues that have been raised with the LEP with respect to the zoning of Brett Street in Reevesby. One side of the road is zoned six stories, one side of the road is zoned four stories. Can you provide any indication as to why that is the case?
No, I'm not able to provide any assistance with respect to that particular zoning there. I don't have any intimate knowledge of it.
You weren't involved in the preparation of the LEP at all?
No, so...
So who was involved in the preparation of the LEP?
The LEP itself was a result of a planning proposal based on work going back to, in the order of circa 2010/12. It would have been planning staff that were involved in developing a strategic document called the Local Area Plan. The Local Area Plan set forward a strategy as to how the housing strategy and the housing targets would land within centres. And part of that strategic work was then to look at the built form. I wasn't involved, obviously not being involved in, not being one of the planning staff in that particular work, but that was the subject of various planning staff, but also external consultants and the public exhibition process. But that particular detail, I have no awareness of.
Okay, so no concerns have been raised with you about the fact that of the sites that have been zoned for six stories in Brett Street, that all but one of them are owned by Reevesby Workers' Club?
No, no concerns were raised with me.
None at all compared, none of the shopkeepers and owners on the other side who've got properties zoned for four stories, haven't raised concerns with you about the differential?
I can't recall any, I have no memory of any concerns being raised with me.
Okay. Did any councillors declare a conflict of interest in determining that LEP due to their association with Reevesby Workers' Club?
In terms of the LEP, several councillors declared several conflicts of interest. And my recollection is that the LEP ultimately didn't have quorum for council to consider and so the determination was delegated to the local planning panel to make a decision and refer it to the department.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Martin?
Mr. Stewart, when the new councillor expenses and facilities policy was on exhibition at the ordinary meeting of the 25th of September 2018, item 7.2 was a recommendation, and I'll quote, "In principle, council endorses the proposed councillor expenses and facilities policy as outlined in this report, that the proposed councillor expenses and facilities policy be placed on public exhibition in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act 1993, and that a further report be submitted to council at the conclusion of that period where submissions are received. In the event that no submissions are received, the policy be taken as being adopted by council." Do you recall as to why that policy was revisited and changed?
Mr. Martin, which policy was it?
In regards to councillor expenses and facilities.
Expenses and facilities policy.
And when was the date of that?
25th of September 2018.
I don't have a detailed recall, however, it is a requirement upon every council that within 12 months of an ordinary election, it must put the policy back through the process for re-adoption by council. And I think that fell within that.
Sorry, I just couldn't quite hear the last part.
I think that that policy review fell within those requirements on council from the Office of Local Government.
Okay, and were any councillor expenses approved during that exhibition period?
I couldn't say that they were, but if there was, it would have been under the current policy at that time.
So that the previous policy is, okay. Are you able to take on notice to check for that period as to whether any expenses did not fit in the previous policy yet were reimbursed as if the new policy was in place?
I'm struggling to understand exactly what you're saying. Could you just articulate that for my benefit?
Of course, just in that interim period where the new proposed policy was on exhibition, if any expenses were claimed that did not meet the previous... if any expenses were claimed that did not meet the previous policy, but met the new policy?
Sure.
Do you mind? Thank you, just happy for that taken on notice, thank you. Just one last one. If a councillor submits expenses and they're approved outside of that formal policy, if they don't meet that policy, who is then liable for the unauthorised disbursement of council funds if that were to take place?
I wouldn't know, I haven't come across that circumstance.
Okay, right, thank you.
And was the policy formally adopted by councillors following that exhibition period?
So the, the Act's quite clear on what we're required to do. So after every, after every election, there is a requirement under Local Government Act that a council must review its facilities policy within twelve months of an election. So council would have followed the requirements of the Act, reviewed the policy, put it to council. The facilities policy specifically under the Act is, must be exhibited. So we would have exhibited it at the time. And then following the exhibition, subject to there being no submissions, the policy then is, is adopted again by council.
And considering, you know, these expenses and many of the expenses that have been ventilated through this committee of Canterbury-Bankstown Council. Canterbury-Bankstown Council, of course, applied for a special rate variation in twenty-one, twenty-two, the largest of metropolitan Sydney. Cumulative increase over five years of more than thirty-two percent when it comes to the rates at Canterbury-Bankstown Council. Has there been any analysis done in terms of the expenses policy and any look for cost savings in that area? Do Mr Stewart or Mr Menosky?
Well firstly, thank you, Mr Farlowe. I don't agree that the rate rise was the largest in metropolitan Sydney. At the time, and certainly last week, I part released a number of determinations which almost all of them exceeded ours. And the thirty-two percent quoted, obviously it's a complex issue of after amalgamations, we had harmonisation of rates, which we were required to deal with. During the rate freeze period, Canterbury council lost five million dollars of its rate book because of a retiring fifteen-year infrastructure levy, which the minister told us to do an S I V to, to put back because the, the rate freeze precluded it staying. And the thirty-two, or I think it was thirty-four percent, only contains itself to minimum rates for businesses and residents as opposed to the general ad valorem rate. Whilst it is quite complex, I, I don't agree with that. Council is required to review its policy, as we discussed, following a council election, and it's not on the policy review agenda at this point in time for a further review right now. Having said that, though, the policy is largely modelled on the, the O R G model template, which we apply as a base to any consideration of that particular policy.
Okay, well done.
One more question?
I've got a question. Thanks very much. I just wanted to clarify, in relation to councils, who's the official spokesperson for council?
The mayor is the official spokesperson for the council.
So in relation to media approvals and those kind of things, it's a matter for the mayor in relation to that, it's not a matter for council staff?
Correct.
Thank you. And I just wanted to know, I was just wondering if there was anything that's been raised today that you wanted to take the opportunity to clear up or to clarify or to expand upon from the questions that have been asked today?